Commissioner Shindel?
Here.
Please stand and join us at open court. Today's meeting is for the citizens.
Thank you for all our blessing. We have special community rights received. We asked if you'd be with the victim in reaction this morning. Thank you for all of our emergency service and protective personnel we have. Could you just stay in prayer?
Amen. It's a pledge to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and limited in justice for all.
Ms. Moore?
Good morning, Commissioners and Chief Shaw. I'm back. The trash issue. I spoke with Shelby last night, and Shelby said that he is going next week to some kind of a seminar or something about illegal dumping and trash control. I have James here, so I'll ask him about his progress forward. But I'm here because I still feel we have this concern that something may rest. I've spoken with the city manager and the Ray Holland, who also works with that. And they've announced what is your kind of type of work right now? Mr. Holland gave me a book last night, "Boca Control of Illegal Dumping." And I was reading it, and there are a lot of laws that are in here that could and should be being enforced now to stop this. But as far as moving forward with this trash committee or trying to get something done, it has just been a deadlock. It has been over a year and a half that we've been working on this, and still nothing's been done. And so I just feel it's important to come back to find out what the progress of this will be, or what steps we can take to... Because in the meantime, we have all these other issues that are coming up in the county, and they need our attention, and safety, and all of these things. But we can't let this slip by the wayside either. So I don't know if you have to speak with the Sheriff's Department or who, the cities, what, just start getting this going in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mager?
Thank you, Commissioner Mager. How much do you have on your legislative session?
The next item on the agenda is the legal limits. Why, when are we going to do that this year?
On November 19th, when we do the concentra. That's the plus of the next event that we have, where all the employees are involved.
Okay, thank you. Awesome. Number eight, the second act of the AgroLife Extension Service confirmation, where we made an exception to Section 1213 in section four eight. Megan, you want to come up?
Yeah. Good morning. As the Florence County 4-8 County Officer Team, we are proud to honor the 4-8 Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Service for 106 years of providing experienced education to youngsters throughout the local state.
The 4-8 program seeks to provide like experience for the whole child, including pets, park, and young citizens to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society.
It's more than 619,000 urban suburban adult youth that's ranging in age from eight to 19, hail from diverse ethnic and social life and online backgrounds, and truly represent a cross-section of the state.
The program undoubtedly did not have the success that the sort of national service of its point of 56,000 volunteers who have given their time, confidence, and service to the people.
Throughout its practice, we, the 4-8 program, has developed positive role models, countless citizens, and through its innovative and inspiring programs, continues to build character and instill the values they have made our state strong and great. This proclamation designates October 6th to the 12th, 2013, the 4-8 region of Texas, and men, the 4-8 Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Service, and the many men and women who have made the program successful. Thank you. And the four of them are going to present you with a release that we made last night.
Thank you very much.
Having thanked you before.
We are going to... Hold on, we'll do a little more information. We went back. Thank you. Thank you, guys, very much. Thanks for all out there. You guys do a great job. Thank you, Megan. There are nine to discuss, approve, disapprove, and say yes and no. Voice number 11, an amount of $1,000 covered by an amount of $27,000. Did you have anyone to say there?
Number nine. We're now one week from when the Commission Court did to the new budget, before we got the emergency amendment. And we are now continuing the old method using the emergency amendment as a ticket to our splash money. The law is very clear, in the Commission Court, we authorize emergency expenditure to the amendment to the original budget only in case of grave public necessity, to meet an unusual and unforeseen condition, to not have been included in the original budget, to use for reasonable, difficult, and non-negotiable purposes. This isn't the first time that we've paid regional EMS, Texas Regional, as an emergency for $1,000 here, $1,000 there, and we always call it emergency. The Commission Court did not perform a diligent thought process in view of the emergency expenditures that we approved this year, to see that we could have included this in the budget for some amount of work-related purposes. But I think the worst part of this is the individual we hired as the Director of the Florence County EMS, also called the Texas Regional, and in my view, wreck conflict intervention. And I would not leave, number one, we should pay that particularly, we should not be in emergency commitment to budget. It does not meet the basic criteria established by statute, one canon, one letter, point zero, one zero, Texas government.
Just for clarification, this was Megan, who we hired to disapprove, this is the line to be to this was last budget year. Without having an ambulance to pick up our citizens is an emergency circumstance. So I make a motion, we approve the payment to Texas Regional EMS and Voice number 11, an amount of $1,000 to cover for our citizens.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries three zero. Number 10, is discuss, approve, disapprove, amend the budget, fiscal year 13, which is last year's budget, is 10 months start fiscal year 14, for an unforeseen emergency circumstance in the amount of $1,000 from EMS coverage provided by Texas Regional. That is for ambulances to provide for our citizens in case they had a wreck or whatever. I think that does, quite frankly, meet Section 111 of the Government Code. So I make a motion, we approve, and amend the budget fiscal year 13, for an unforeseen emergency circumstance.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries three zero. Number 11, is discuss, approve, disapprove, adopt a new retirement rate that follows. 13.85 percent, this includes a 0.2 percent flat color rate for retirees, this is adopted for 2013 budget. That's fine.
I'm just going to stand here. It actually should say 0.1 percent flat rate, but the new retirement rate is 13.85 percent.
Okay, so it should say 0.1, but the total is correct?
The total is correct, yes.
Okay. So we need to amend that to, if we approve that to 0.1, but the 13.85 is correct?
I'm sorry, 1 percent.
1 percent?
Not 0.1. Not 0.1, 1 percent.
1 percent.
Yes, that should be 13.85.
Okay.
The total is correct, it's just the percentage rate I put in the wrong.
Let's just approve the total and then with 1 percent increase?
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve the dock in new retirement rate that follows, 13.85 percent, which includes a 1 percent flat color rate.
I'm second.
All in favor?
And did I send the form for you to sign?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I'll get it to you. Because you have to sign it. We have to on December 15th to do this, we just wanted to get it in, just so we don't forget.
Okay, thank you very much. Number 12, is discuss, approve, disapprove, a resolution for Bishop John W. Yonton in regard of burial in the Panera Church grounds? There's a resolution in the package. Kind of explain this to you a little bit, if you know the background. Bishop Yonton came to see me. Father Leopold is interment in the Panera Church grounds, and Father Reverend Bishop's asking for the same interment process. He did go through legal counsel to be able to check out the Texas Health and Safety Code, we looked into the Texas Occupational Code, Texas Funeral Health Services Commission, and Langley and Benak didn't look into this, and there didn't appear to be a problem. Yonton, I approve the resolution, allow it.
I agree.
Okay. And he's just asking for interment, and if there's no, I mean, the separation of state church, I don't see it being a problem with us. I don't have a problem with it at all. Bishop Yonton wants that, and the Panera Church agrees to it, I'm fine with it.
I make a motion, approve, adopt, 12. I'm second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries three zero. I'm going to give one to Carol. Carol, will you stamp it? I'll put it back, Bishop Yonton. Thank you. Number 13, is consideration in action of a memorandum of understanding between James Rosales and Florence County General Protection Board, the County of Florence, approved authorized county judge to execute the document.
Commissioner Rosales has donated the use of a lot of Broadway Emerson here in Florence City to the youth group. They use it for, I believe they got from Rote, kind of, it's an enclosure there, but he's given the use of the property to him, and he needs this memorandum agreement, signed by the county, regarded for the purpose of income tax, where his account at these is for actually income tax issues.
Harv, who embarrassed to tell you?
Commissioner Rosales, he wrote it to me, oh, that he prepared.
You went to go to your client?
I have some. I talked with also the director, and she...
Niva Smith?
Niva.
What this is, if anybody wants to know, the MOG is, we have a program called ROATs for our juveniles, which is a physical program, which they need land to be able to perform these activities that they carry out. And they just don't make that link.
There is agreement on the property already, this is the clarification that I agree.
I don't have a problem with it. They need the land.
Can we have a technical?
Yes, we do, but Harv, I have a question, is it kind of effective today?
I guess.
I make a motion, we approve memorandum of understanding, item 13, as presented.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries three zero. Hold on one second. Carol, I'm going to give you both copies of this one, this executed, because James needs to sign it, and Niva needs to sign it.
Niva's in school this weekend, we might Thursday. Mr. Rosales is in school also, I guess it's okay.
But that way they'll just stop one place, they won't run from building to building if Carol's... Okay, so, did I do all in favor? The next item on the agenda is to discuss, approve, disapprove, realizing the Victoria Avenue newspaper is a paper of local circulation, and Harv and I put that one on there. It's for emergency situations, such as we ran into in the tax rate, with people wanting to re-advertise or do something, we would have a daily newspaper to be able to advertise.
It does not include the...
No.
It's just an addition to the...
I make a motion, approve, adopt, 12.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries three zero. Number 15, Ronnie, I know you put that one on there, but we're going to have to wait on that, we're going to add it to the other list. I didn't catch this part or two. We have to have public hearings, to reduce these speed limits.
I have a problem. There was a citizen who made this request, and I told him to get it out.
And I know that we have done this, there's a lot of them that we have to go back and redo. Every single one that Shelby submitted, we have to go back and redo. So we have to have, I don't know if it's one public hearing or two public hearings, I can't remember what the local government says.
I would have code on that. If we do the public hearing process, I think, if I understand right, Harv, we can do all the roads or multiple roads, not just one at a time?
We can. I believe you're right.
That's right.
Let's just pass on number 15, please. No action. Number 16, is print of the tax collector report.
Tax collection report for the month of September. For the county, current month, $40,598.22. Recollection rate of 98.69 percent. The delinquent roll for the county, the month of September, $3,115.13. Year-to-date, $93,588.44. Recollection rate of 43.08 percent. Road and Bridge, for the month of September, $9,717.3. Year-to-date, $1,908,360.75. Recollection rate of 98.7 percent. The delinquent roll for Road and Bridge, the month of September, $316.27. Year-to-date, $10,015.01. Recollection rate of 48.469 percent. Rural Fire, for September, $5,057.59. Year-to-date, $996,381.32. Recollection rate of 98.675 percent. The delinquent roll, for September, $188.11. Year-to-date, $5,722.22. Recollection rate of 53.386 percent.
Thank you, Brenda. The next one, you're going to take a buy on, which is the Treasury Report.
Can we reset that to October 31st?
Okay.
Just because it's the end of our fiscal year, September 30th, it takes a little bit more time to close the books, and so we need a little bit more time to get that done.
You're fine.
Thank you.
Next is page of bills.
Page one, two-thirds of the way down, there's a hangout to do with Pope and Sons, $6,500 in election department, that is the new copier that was authorized by court for that department. A bit further down is a payment to debt and borrow, $3,459.95 for special counsel. We go to page six, the first section of bills totaling $74,316.94. It's road materials to be reimbursed out of the bond when we receive those proceeds. The total of this billing cycle is $163,691.12.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item on the agenda is reporting these fines and money collected. The question on this is the county clerk. Carol's got her toll for the month, it's $41,956.57. The district clerk. She asked for her criminal report, she had a total of $18,773 collected, $43,5739 to the 81st and 718th Judicial District, pre-sentence investigations, $23.39, felony probation was $4,334, restitution dispersed was $10,558, and retained in the county. is $4,334. Restitution as first was $10,558. And retained in the county is $38,761. Civil report, she has $11,679.50 collected. The total district clerk fee was $5,741. Total sheriff's fee was $472.50. Total state civil fees was $8865. Total court costs were $4,601. And attorney general fees retained in the county are $1,252.6. The next is behind the attorney. A report that Dorothy turned in for September, she collected $1,368.18 for year-to-date total of $27,441.26 in restitution. Court costs were $270 for the month of September with a year-to-date total of $5,522.7. And county attorney, $131.13 to $930.13 was $32,963.33 compared to year-to-date last year, which was $35,809.39. Justice of the peace, you have yours, Daisy?
Yes, I am on Judge Settle.
Okay.
Judge Settle had a total of 74 new cases filed in her court. She collected a total of $12,747.30. The amount kept by the county is $8,178.31. Remitted to the state is $4,568.99. My office, there was a total of 172 new cases filed. We collected $39,296.35. Amount kept by the county is $29,009.91. Remitted to the state is $10,286.54.
It's Daisy, go on. Judge Tuttello left his up here.
I'm sorry?
Judge Tuttello left his up here.
Yes.
And says new cases filed were 30. And his total collected was $13,928.50. And kept by the county was $10,536.94. And remitted to the state was $3,391.56. Juvenile, I did not get a juvenile report. Special projects.
For development application, we had a total of 25, or total of 22.75. On the 7th, we only had six applications, a total of 2,400, and the county portion was 1,000.
Did I miss anything? Number 20, move to number 20, we have a report from Road and Bridge, Bonnie.
I've actually, currently delivered reports, one on our bond roads, and then one on our repair. On the bond road, basically what you see is a recap, and we're probably 70% complete with that project, and we're well within that. If you look at the first sheet, it gives a total allocation for that project and what we've used and the remaining. And then we have a breakout, the next two sheets, on what that material, what those expenditures were for. Material, trucking, water. We're doing a little different on this particular project, bringing material from Colorado materials to the Bronsville. So the trucking is considerably higher, but the cost of the material is considerably less. And when you add those two figures together, we're within a dollar of what local material would cost. And the significant difference is local material is sandstone, which we're having a problem with the heavy traffic, breaking sandstone down. This material, limestone, and I think life of the road, it will be considerably longer. The next page is a breakout on all the expenditures, concrete. You see on there, for example, one of where we purchased teapots, what that was used for. We had some culverts, had big trees washing up against them, everything, a backhoe to clear out the area out. We had a few of the fence back where we cleared it out. Any questions on those expenditures on that road? The reason I included the next pages, I just wanted y'all to be able to look and see how our system's functioning. This is just a recap of one day's activity, the following three pages, and you can see the volume of material that was brought in. We were averaging in the neighborhood of 40 loads a day of Colorado material, six loads a day on our trucks. So that project went really well, really quick. Real proud of our crew. I think they did a superb job. I'd like to have you go out and look at it, see what you think. Yes, sir. Kind of about 1:45. The next report is our general construction. This is the calls we receive daily, and then the type of work performed in response to those calls. The front page is just a recap of the work designated, which road the work was performed on, and a general description of the work. The following pages are the actual printout from the calls, where the calls were generated from, and then just a brief description of what type of work was done in response to those calls. And let me say, this is work that was completed. We still have a number of calls that we received that have not been completed for one reason or another. And now that we're in our budget, we'll be able to do a lot more of these. We had, near the end of the year, to avoid going over budget, we had focused on our bond road, so that we could expend the bond, I mean, that was available, without going in red on our general revenue budget. Any comments or questions on either one of those reports?
You responded to the one that I called in about, I did get it. Thank you.
And it's really nice to walk into office and see notes posted for citizens that have called to say thank you. That's a really good feeling. On the bond roads, I'm attempting to do, to designate one road per precinct and rotate. And we've done a road in all the precincts except precinct three. And we went out yesterday and started doing a survey on word heated, and our next bond road we're actually starting this morning in precinct three. Thank you all.
Wonder, are you waiting till 3:30 as well?
Yes.
Shelby saw here, please.
Can I say something about that? We are going to have a policy meeting on October 21st, and he's aware of it. He said it changes to, Mary Ann signs to review before we meet, because there are some changes when you meet.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we have a question to follow along with this building setup called CSI. Could be here this week.
Tracy?
Permitting in all fields. The amount we took in from the month of September was $80,536.
The next one, I'm imagining is Twitter.
I make motion Twitter, I second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries three zero.